Good evening. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of Monday, April 28, 2025. I now call the meeting to order. It's time for Pledge of Allegiance, and tonight we will have Vice Chair Zick lead us in the pledge. If you'd all stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Vice Chair. Anna, will you please do the voice roll call?
Chair Harlan.
Here.
Vice Chair Zick.
Here.
Commissioner Rojas.
Here.
Commissioner Klepak.
Here.
Commissioner Andrade.
Here.
Commissioner Dixon.
Here.
Commissioner Martinez.
Here.
All right. Great. We have no announcements or presentations tonight, so we will go straight to public comments. Public comments will be heard at this time on items that are not listed on the agenda but are within our jurisdiction. I'll open the public comment, and if you'd like to speak, please come forward to the podium, or if you're participating by Zoom, or raise your hand option at the bottom of the screen, or if you're joining the meeting by phone and like to speak, please press star nine. Anybody in chambers want to run on up? All right. Seeing none, Anna, do we have anybody on Zoom or phone?
No, we do not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Great. I will close public comments. Zipping through this, now it's time for Planning Commission comments and suggestions, and I'm going to start on my far left with Commissioner Martinez.
Thank you. Last Saturday, I attended the Costa Mesa Earth Day event here at City Hall. It was great. I got to see a lot of the booths. I got to participate at the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan booth that we had here. It was nice seeing everyone's commitment to sustainability from nonprofit organizations to our state and federal elected officials here. Additionally, let's see, tomorrow, there will be a Community Preparedness Town Hall. That'll be at Elsancia High School at 5:30 PM with the Fire Chief, the Costa Mesa Police Department, and the Mesa Water District, so attend if you can. On May 3, the City of Irvine will be hosting Ciclo Irvine. They're going to close off a segment of Campus Drive and hold an Open Streets event. So I'm very excited to participate in that. It was a very fun event last year when I went, and I'm looking forward to when Costa Mesa could also hold an Open Streets event. And finally, the city is looking for public input on the consolidated plan. This is the plan for home and CDBG funds. Comment period is open, I believe, through mid-May, so hopefully you can all check out what they're looking for comment on. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Martinez. Commissioner Dixon, any comments?
Briefly. There's an even, this is generally related to Harbor Boulevard, so I can just make a general comment. So there's an item on the agenda this evening on Harbor Boulevard, and I just wanted to just make a comment that I hope to see, I'm not sure where we are in the process, or if we've even come up with sort of a planning or a conceptual thing for a Harbor Boulevard specific plan. I know we've talked about it over the years, but it'd be nice to maybe have a study session in the future, or maybe a staff presentation, or something about the efforts that the city is undertaking on economic development and a Harbor Boulevard specific plan, just because we have, you know, Measure K, we have development in the corridors. Harbor Boulevard is, you know, one of our major commercial corridors, and it would be nice to have a little more kind of cohesive planning moving forward on Harbor Boulevard. I went to see Hamilton this weekend at the Performing Arts Center, and it's just, it's the most beautiful facility anywhere. I've been all over the United States at forming arts centers, and it's just amazing. So that was a great, I encourage everybody to go out there and see it if you haven't already. And then, on a personal note, today is the 16th anniversary of my asking my wife to marry me, so that's a good day for us, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Dixon. Vice Chair Zick.
I can't top that, no.
All right. Commissioner Andrade.
Yeah, I'll just also share, my family and I got to participate to the wonderful, really well-coordinated Earth Day event here on campus, regardless of the rain that kicked it off. It was so well-attended, but really great to see some private companies that are focused on sustainability within our community, and also a great job on the planning team that was talking about their sustainability plans and aspirations, collecting community feedback. I think that was a really nice, creative way to have folks riding on a leaf of the tree of what sustainability looks like in Costa Mesa. So thanks for a great and engaging Earth Day here in Costa Mesa.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Klepak.
Congratulations on the anniversary. Hope your wife is watching right now. I also attended the Earth Day event and picked up some compost while I was there, got a few bags of compost, and I always just really appreciate when the city hosts those events. I have California native plants all around my property, and so I love to take advantage of that. So, great event. Thank you.
All right. And Commissioner Rojas, any comments?
No, I have no comments. Thank you.
Okay. Neither do I. So let us move to the consent calendar. We have two items on the consent calendar tonight. All matters listed under Consent Calendar are considered to be routine and will be acted upon in one motion. There's no separate discussion of these items unless members of the Planning Commission, staff, or public request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar. Items removed from the consent calendar will be discussed and voted on immediately following the Planning Commission action on the remainder of the consent calendar. I think no items have been pulled. Does anyone want to make a motion on the minutes? Motion by Commissioner Dixon.
I will move that we accept the, are we doing all the minute?
Yes.
Move the accept the items on the consent calendar, one as a two.
Okay. Seconded by Commissioner Andrade. Let's call for the question.
That motion carries seven zero.
Okay. And to the main item tonight, we have one public hearing. Anna, if you'd be, read that into the record.
Public hearing, item number one, conditional use permit PCUP-23-0003 for a 47-unit, single-room occupancy motel conversion at 2205 Harbor Boulevard. Please note, we have not, we have received one public comment on this item, and it has been provided to the commission. This is a call for any ex parte communications.
Commissioners, any ex parte communications?
Yes.
Commissioner Andrade, yes, please.
Two-fold. So today I got to speak to the applicant about details about the project and its partners, but in addition, I will have to recuse myself because due to proximity to the property, my, where I live, abuts, we share a wall with this property, so I'll leave you all to it.
Okay. We will wait for you to depart the chambers, and then...
Never to return.
While she's exiting, Commissioner Martinez?
I visited the site.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I also visited the site. I didn't speak to anybody there, but I did visit the site for a visual inspection.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Rojas. Mr. Drapkin, are you filling in for Mr. Jaeger tonight?
That is correct. Unfortunately, our planner, Senior Jaeger, he came down with some bug on Sunday and called me this morning with the bad news, and I feel bad for him, and I feel equally as bad for you for me having to do the presentation.
Well, we're happy to have you, so floor is yours.
Thank you very much. So, good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Tonight's hearing is for the Planning Commission consideration of the conversion of an existing motel to a single-room occupancy unit. The project is located between Victoria Street and Wilson Street on Harbor Boulevard. The project is located on one of the city's main commercial corridors, and surrounding uses include a mobile home park, an apartment complex, a furniture store, and various other services and retail uses on Harbor Boulevard. The site has a general plan land use designation of general commercial and is Zone C2. The general commercial zoning designation is intended to permit a wide range of commercial uses that serve both local and regional needs, and the C2 zone is intended to provide for those uses which offer a wide range of goods and services which are generally more compatible with intensive retail and commercial uses. The project is proposing a 47-unit SRO. That includes one manager's unit, that's 46 units dedicated to very low income, and the one manager's unit, which totals 47. The application also proposes a minor remodel of the site, which includes paint, removal of the motel swimming pool, and landscape and parking lot improvements. This slide shows an aerial photo of the existing motel and the proposed site plan. The plan for the site is to generally keep the existing buildings in the site configuration the way it is, and modify the interior slightly for long-term residential units and to comply with current building codes. The City Council has approved a policy that directs the development of SROs proposed in the city. The council policy dictates room size and occupancy limits, the requirements to have adequate and modest kitchen and bathroom facilities, parking requirements, and an operation plan that includes provisions for tenant selection, income verification, site management and security, rental term and rates, common and storage areas, and other management requirements. This is the proposed floor plan for a typical SR unit in the development pursuant to City Council SRO provisions. The minimum size for an SRO unit is 175 square feet for a single occupancy unit, 220 square feet for a double occupancy unit, 450 maximum square feet for a unit, and there's a maximum mix requirement of single to double occupancy of 10% double income units. As proposed, the project complies with the size requirements in that the minimum size single occupancy room is 175 square feet, and the minimum double occupancy room is 238 square feet. City Council policy standards for SROs regarding affordability includes that SRO shall be rented at no more than 50% of the Orange County median income, which falls into the very low-income category. The unit shall be rented on a monthly or annual basis, and the applicant is required to write annual income reporting and verification to the city regarding occupant incomes. The applicant is proposing to rent the units on an annual basis into very low-income residents as the SRO policy requires. As an example of the current maximum income that a very low-income, single-tenant occupant can make is $55,220, and that rent for that would equate to $1,381. The project property is listed by the city's housing element as part of the city's housing opportunity sites. Specifically, the city's housing element specifies that this site is to accommodate a total of 28 housing units, with five very low-income units, three low-income units, five moderate-income units, and 15 above-moderate-income units. State law requires that when a site is developed with a shortfall in a density or different than what is indicated in the housing element to meet the city's RENA by income levels, then the city is required to make one of two findings. Either another site can be rezoned to accommodate the proposed deficiency, or the city's sites analysis includes a surplus of the units to accommodate the proposed shortage. In this case of the project, the proposed development includes a shortfall of three low-income units, five moderate-income units, and 14 above-moderate-income units. The state-required findings can be made in that the city's housing element contemplates a housing site surplus of 49 low-income units, 1,149 moderate-income units, and 1,064 above-moderate-income This slide shows examples of the site-specific conditions of approval for the project, which includes limiting the hours of certain outside areas, requirement to rent at very low incomes, providing annual reports to the city for income and tenant verification, and requirements to make improvements in the public right-of-way, and to comply with the city's landscape requirements, to name a few. As indicated in the staff recommendation, staff believes that the findings can be made for their project, both the CUP findings and the non-net loss findings. And staff recommends that the Planning Commission find that the project is categorically exempt from CEQA and approve the conditional use permit subject to the conditions of approval. This concludes staff's recommendation, and staff is available to answer questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Drapkin. Commissioners, any questions for staff? Commissioner Martinez?
Yes, of course. So I'll start with conditions of approval. Condition of approval number 20 mentions the bike rack placement. Is similar language required for the bike lockers that are also, that are also being proposed?
It's not included, but the Planning Commission could add similar language as a condition of approval. Lockers are not a requirement, but it's certainly amenity that helps.
Yeah. I was wondering why this condition was included in the first place. I don't think I've seen this condition before with other applications.
Generally, we do include bicycle rack conditions of approval on most of them where they're being proposed.
Okay. Like the specific, like, in a location that is functional, accessible, and visible to the user?
Yeah, we might got a little bit more crafty than we normally get than the standard language.
Okay.
It might be because this is an existing facility where we're trying to propose the use of it. Encourage, I should say, encourage the use of it.
Yes.
But yeah, you're right.
Okay. I'll go to number 24, which is the AB 2097 form. First of all, what is this? Why is it required? And what kind of language will be in this form?
So this is a standard indemnification requirement. It really came forward through the 2097 requirements. It says typical condition of approval for 2097. It's used by multiple cities. When we were reviewing for good practices for 2097, we met with the city attorney's office, not Tarkwin specifically, but one of his contemporaries, and that specializes in the implementation of AB 2097 for public agencies, and he suggested that we include this indemnification.
Are there any other state laws that we require an indemnification form for?
Not that I recall. We do requ, you know, I would say there was one for 80, no, no, I take that back, there wasn't.
Thank you, Commissioner Martinez. I'm not aware of any specific other indemnification forms that we require, well, I strike that. We do require indemnification and forms for indemnification when it comes to certain cannabis uses, specifically cannabis retail. We provide for indemnification whether or not there are forms that need to be signed, but there are standard conditions of approval, and they appear routinely in almost all city agreements with outside entities.
Number 26 has an annual report requirement. Do we require that of other SROs?
Correct, and other affordable projects.
And do we make those reports public?
It's public information if asked, to a certain degree, not, maybe not including tenant names, but some information might be available for the public. I'd have to think and meet with the city attorney to see which ones might be restricted.
Okay.
But no one's ever asked, at least since I've been here.
Okay. All right. Are, will social services be available on the property?
The application does not include social services.
And I believe my last one is, if you could just go over the open space on the property again, and like, is the back area also included as open space that is accessible to residents?
Correct. There is a pathway that leads from the, from the parking lot and the apartments.
Good.
The units.
Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Vice Chair Zick.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Drapkin, for an excellent report. On page two of the staff report, where we've got the table of information and the references to single occupancy and double occupancy, I'm wondering first about the semantic of that term. If I were to reserve a hotel room, for example, and it was single occupancy, that would mean just me, not me and my wife. In the context of this project, does a single occupancy unit mean only one person?
Correct.
Okay. Now, I should have told you that I ask trick questions, but I think you know me by now.
I know you by now.
So if you look at the PMP page nine, and on PMP page nine, at the very bottom, it indicates for a studio unit size, the minimum number of people is one, the maximum number of people is two. So how do we square our expectation that minimum occupancy units are only one person with the PMP that suggests that it could be two?
Obviously, this is an application, applicant's submittal for the operation plan. I don't, I'm not aware of there being a differentiation between a single occupancy unit and a double occupancy unit, other than for the needs of one or two. I would say that this one's mistaken. There are two stars afterward. I'm wondering what those...
On the next page is explanation about that.
So they, so it's a caregiver scenario, apparently, when somebody's staying with them for a, and it also lists a shortage. One of the portions of the code allows for the conditional use permit to make changes and allowances to the policy where needed, so this might fall under that if you were to look at the SRO provisions of City Council policy.
Okay. So here's my, here's my concern, and I guess it could be dealt with later when we discuss a motion. I don't see anything in the conditions of approval that would require us to have only one person in the single occupancy unit. And if we didn't have that as a condition of approval, I can imagine a different scenario that some might consider undesirable. My next question. And I'm on the staff report, page five. And the fifth bullet that describes a finding which we must make is that the, this will not allow a use density or intensity not in accordance with the general plan. And I have a question about that. Is the housing element update part of our general plan?
It is.
Okay. So when I looked then at the staff report, page 11, where we talk about this Senate Bill 166, and we indicate that if we approve a project that's identified in the housing element with fewer units than is required, then we also have to make a finding that the remaining sites in the housing element have sufficient capacity to accommodate the remaining unmet re allocation for each income level. And the indication in this staff report is that you're able to do that. My corollary question, though, is, did we do that same analysis, and here I think is pretty easy because we're dealing with such small numbers, did we do that same analysis with One Metro West? Will we do that same analysis with the Hive? Did we do that same analysis with the development at Trinity?
Yes, we have done that in the, we did it for every project that you suggested, except for One Metro.
Okay. And with the re allocation requiring 2,919 very low-income units, with those mega apartment complexes, how do we expect to ever achieve those numbers? On this project, I can see how you would say, well, we don't meet what we set in the housing element for this site, but we can make it up with other sites. With these mega apartment complexes that don't come close to these numbers of very low units, how can we credibly make an argument that we'll make it up on the next project when I can't see any project on the horizon that's going to be providing anywhere close to 2,919 very low units? That's a long question, and a loaded one, I'll admit.
Okay. Well, no problem, and it's a great question, similar to all of your questions. There, the way that the housing element sites analysis worked was that we took review of the RENA, which was 11,760 units, and then also estimated high, knowing that we were going to get into a jam like you speak of. One of the requirements when we were reviewing the housing element and we were negotiating, for lack of better terms, with the state, was that they generally said that we needed to have this surplus, and we put that in there. That will account for a lot of the issue, the shortfalls that we've seen so far. At some point, we'll use them up, and then other projects that come our way, we're finding that they're providing surplus. Even in this project, we're getting a surplus of very low, and Jamboree Housing, we're getting a surplus of 10 or so, maybe 10 or 15 or 20 more units. I can't remember what it was, but it was some units. We are, we're getting clearly units for above-moderate, which is not a problem. Finding issues with the moderate is a bigger task than you would think than the low and the very low, but we've sort of planned for that with the housing element process.
Okay. So expect on future projects, I'll be looking specifically for that analysis. My next question has to do with this requirement for a closet or storage area of at least 40, oh, I'm on page seven of the staff report. Requirement for a closet or storage area of at least 40 cubic feet and a locker of at least 10 cubic feet. And when I look at the diagram that's in the staff report, I don't see any closet, storage area, or locker. When I look at the diagram that the applicant has proposed, and that is like AE 2.1, I see kind of a furniture layout. So my question is, specifically, is the 40-cubic-foot requirement and 10-cubic-foot requirement met within each unit? As opposed to some locker facility over in the corner?
Yeah, it's my understanding that it'll be satisfied within the interior of each unit, and will be conditioned, and that's why it's conditioned, and we'll be checking for it when, when we're finaling the plans as well.
Got it. Okay. And then in terms of parking, so I clearly understand that you can't require minimum parking anymore for pretty much any development up and down Harbor Boulevard, or any parcel anywhere close to a bus stop. I get that now. My question, though, is, with 46 units, and the possibility that there might be 35, 40 cars, who knows? What is it that we're expecting to occur when the 26 parking spaces are full?
So...
What's a reasonable expectation for where... What's a reasonable expectation for where the extra cars go?
So I, I don't, I'm going to indirectly answer your question, if you don't mind. I have checked with some of our other similar projects, like our, our key projects, home key projects, and looked at some established key, home key projects, and the percentage of parking requirements for these types of very low-income projects are considerably low, like, less than .5.
Because not everybody owns a car.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, which is interesting, but it's true.
Okay, I accept that. All right, on page eight, there is the indication, second to last paragraph, that these units will be rented on an annual basis. If I turn to condition of approval number 25, it states, "All units rented shall be the tenant's primary residence, and units shall be rented for terms no less than one month." In the PMP, it pretty clearly states what the staff report indicates, and that is, where is it? The very first, page one of the PMP, that the units will be rented on an annual basis. Monthly rental will not be allowed. So it seems to me the condition of approval number 25 should be very specific and mirror the operational plan, which requires that the SRO units be rented on an annual basis. Is there any reason that you can think of why that was not the way the condition was written?
Yeah, only one reason is in that it's, that condition mirrors the City Council SRO policy only, but if the commission feels more comfortable with that as a requirement instead, it could definitely be updated based on the applicant's application that's proposed in their PMP.
Okay, fair enough. I have just a couple more questions. I'm looking at the conditions of approval, specifically number 16, that talks about "The common patio area shall be closed and unused from 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM." I'm assuming the basis of that is noise. My question is, is this a city rule, or is this what the management has indicated their rule would be for the site? Because I didn't see it in the PMP. I could have missed it.
Yeah, I, to be honest with you, do not know the answer to that question. I apologize, Commissioner Zick. Unfortunately, Chris Jaeger's not here to let you know. It might be a great question for the applicant, though. If the applicant indicates that it was not, obviously, you can point out that it's staff condition.
And then I wanted to follow up Commissioner Martinez's question about condition of approval number 24 regarding this indemnification related to AB 2097. And I understood part of the answer was, other cities are, are doing this. My question's maybe a little more direct. What is the risk that we are trying to indemnify ourself from? What is the potential risk we are trying to indemnify ourself from? And presumably, other cities are trying to indemnify themselves from.
So from speaking to the city attorney's office, and again, it was not Tarquin, so I apologize, Tarquin, for not updating you on that potential question, but the, the discussion that I had with Scott, who was from Tarquin's office, mentioned that the potential overflow of the parking that could impact other properties, that was the reason for the indemnification. So essentially, allowing something like that and the city's potential exposure to that creation, creating a parking overflow like that, what was the, the attorney that we were involved with was interested in putting that indemnification. And again, similar to other agencies that also include this. So it really is just exposure of the overflow. It's not, it's not any, it's not any more intricate than that.
Says a lot about what we think about AB 2097, apparently. Okay, condition of approval number 28. Smoking shall not occur on the property outside of the approved smoking areas. I have two questions or two comments about that. The first is, the PMP is pretty clear that smoking is not allowed in the units. And I think that this condition of approval should be reworded, to be more specific about that. The smoking shall not occur in the units or anywhere on the property except the designated smoking area. And then my next question is, where is that? Because I don't see it on the drawing anywhere.
Yeah, let's, let's ask the applicant about that.
Okay, all right. I think this is probably a question for the applicant, but I'll put it out there, in case they want to come prepared with an answer. I'm looking at the PMP, page one. The units come fully furnished. My question is, in the single occupancy unit, what is the size of the bed? And I have the same question with regard to the double occupancy units, the four double occupancy units. I have another question for them I won't ask you to respond to. The PMP, page three, there's an indication that, or a statement that says, the management, third paragraph, "The management company acknowledges that there are multiple public agencies involved in the development and operation of the property, including the City of Costa Mesa." My question is, what is the extent of that involvement by the City of Costa Mesa?
Sorry, could you ask that question one more time, just so I can get it clear?
Third paragraph of the PMP, on page three, says, "The management company acknowledges that there are multiple public agencies involved in the development and operation of the property, including City of Costa Mesa, County of Orange, and various nonprofits," and they list several. My question is, what is the extent of the City of Costa Mesa's involvement in this development and operation?
So currently, the, the city's extent of, of involvement includes the conditional use permit and the requirements of the conditions of approval for compliance with all the conditions of approval, and making sure that the findings remain as approved, and also having annual reporting received from them and checking.
Okay, got it. Same kind of involvement you pretty much have on any project?
Correct, that would have been a quicker way to suggest that, yeah.
Okay. Also on that page, oh, that's not a question for you, it's for them. I'm almost done, Chair. So, and again, I think this follows up, but to be clear, follows up a question that Commissioner Martinez asked, and I'm on PMP, page 19. And it indicates that the management company will, second to last paragraph, "The management company will collaborate with the resident services staff and case managers in an effort to," and they go on to explain what that activity is. Those are not onsite services, to your understanding, correct?
Correct.
And on the next page, the, the first new paragraph talks about a lead supportive service provided in the building, and will be the in-house supportive service provider. And again, you're not familiar with any onsite, in-house, supportive service provider. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And in the third paragraph on that page, where it indicates that this lead service provider will work with the City of Costa Mesa, County of Orange, et cetera, that is just a minimal coordination, communication activity, that is not a official process role, correct?
Which section, I'm sorry, on that page?
On page 20 of the PMP, third paragraph down, first paragraph under 9.3.
Got it.
And it's the second line in that paragraph that indicates that this service provider will work with the City of Costa Mesa. Want to make sure that's not part of some official process.
There's no official process, and we have had this proposed use reviewed by our housing services manager, who is Nate Robbins, with regards to these different aspects, and he was, he was good with them, the plan.
And then my final question, I'm looking at the council policy, which is attachment three. And at the, the bottom of that page, the second paragraph under process, it says, "The proposed SRO developments will require approval by the planning commission," and it's the second part of that sentence that I'm referring to then, "and may first require a pre-application screening before the planning commission to allow initial feedback to be incorporated into the applicant's submittal." Well, we obviously didn't have that. What I note, though, is that this policy was revised in 2021, and prior to that, the original policy said that it should be brought to a study session of the planning commission. So I'm curious why, why, why this is the first time we've seen it, when there's a council policy that was initially much more directive, and even this one is very suggestive of our pre-involvement.
Yeah, I think that's a difficult question to answer, not being in the room when that discussion might have occurred. But I will, I will suggest that if staff, staff believed that there needed to be an initial review of this by the planning commission, we knew that we did have this provision that we could take advantage of, and I think we felt like we could get it done in one shot.
Okay, that's all the questions I've got for staff. I'll have questions for the applicant.
All right, thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Dixon?
Thank you very much. And Vice Chair Zick and Commissioner Martinez asked most of my questions, but I, I had a couple of questions regarding the PMP, and, Mr. Drapkin, do you, so I understand this is something the applicant put together, and we could ask the applicant about that, but if we wanted to have, suggest any changes to this, or have a concern with any parts of this PMP, procedurally, would the applicant then need to resubmit, or could we just do that unilaterally? Because it's not conditions of approval, it's not a city-drafted document. So we could add a condition of approval, maybe clarifying something in the PMP if we wanted to, if that were the...
Absolutely. It's part of the application, and we can modify as needed.
Okay.
As approved conditions.
Okay. Couple, just kind of baseline questions, is who would be the lead service provider? Do you know?
That it would be the applicant, the question for the applicant, but the applicant would be the lead services, it's my understanding.
Okay, because I've worked on, in other cities, on permanent, permanent supportive housing, and those services, as Commissioner Martinez was referencing, will typically be onsite, right? It'll be something where they'll have an office, or there'll be some other function where the resident can go, you know, for extended periods of time and interface with that person who's always there. I'm assuming this would be, since they're not permanently onsite, this would be some sort of appointment-based system or something in the, in the person's unit, I can ask the applicant. But so much of this hinges, a lot of this housing support stuff and resident retention on case managers and service providers, that I think we should have a little bit of clarity as to who that may be. And we'll ask the, the provider, the applicant. The other question is, again, back to condition of approval number 24, and I sent you a late email, so I know you probably didn't get it in time, but during the deliberation for the West End project before the City Council, you had mentioned a memo, an implementation memo that the city was coming up with regarding AB 2097. Any, has that been developed yet, or is the staff still working on it, or...
So we have drafted an, an internal memo for staff to use for the 2097.
I ask because there's some, there's some interesting exceptions in there, and there's some interesting findings that would need to be found in certain projects. And so I would like to have more clarity from staff, and if it's an internal thing, that's fine, but maybe we can talk about it on a, you know, just, it would be really nice, other cities have sort of a, not just a fact sheet, but sort of a, you know, an explainer, maybe.
Sure.
So it, just to be helpful, because I feel like if there's any of these, because of the exception where you have to make a finding that it would impede or cause a, a problem with some other parking to other areas or other businesses, it would be nice to better understand how the city approaches that down the road.
No, I think it's a good recommendation or a suggestion to have some clarification online, maybe under the city development services page, that explains the 2097 requirements and some of the aspects of when and when you cannot make the findings and how difficult they are. That's basically what the memo says.
Yeah, yeah, some cities have that online, some cities don't, so, yeah, so, and some you have to look into staff reports, but anyway, okay, thank you.
It might also show a map of the area as well, which is important.
Excellent, excellent. And then regarding the, the bike racks, I think, I appreciate that condition, because when we used to require these, people would hide them, you know, and, and I think that's what Commissioner Martinez was going as well, that especially like in an old martina, in an old motel property, you wouldn't want it, like, stuck in the back of your tree kind of deal. So that's a great condition of approval, I like that.
Right, I will mention to staff via spread wide email that discusses the incorporate that language into future projects for bike parking.
Yeah, because, I mean, I appreciate the bike racks that have appeared throughout the city, but some are in baffling locations that will absolutely never, ever, ever be used. So, anyway. And then regarding, on, on stuff, and I really appreciate your comment about the, the looking into other projects regarding the parking. If in the future, if we start seeing more of this type of thing, which I don't imagine we will, see a tremendous number of SROs, but if we could get, maybe, you guys have done tremendous charts in the past that show different jurisdictions and sort of the, the units they have and things like that, it may not be something that's feasible to do on a project-by-project basis, but it's helpful for us to, to really gauge how that's working. And again, don't go out and create it new, but, but if you do have some examples of, like, because I know in San Ana, this parking works. I've talked to the people over there, so...
Right, we did, I did, like I said, I spoke with some different nonprofits that have been involved with some of these developments, and empirical data says that the parking is very, very minimal.
Excellent.
The parking demand, I should say.
And then one more, and this may be an applicant question as well, actually, I will wait for the applicant. Thank you, those are my questions.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Dixon. Hold on, anything over here?
Nope.
Okay, Commissioner Martinez?
Okay, two clarifying questions. First is on condition of approval number 21. It mentions, "Shall operate in compliance with the operational plan," and I just want to make sure that that is in fact referring to the property management plan.
That's correct, Commissioner Martinez?
Would, we need to change that language, or is that good enough for staff?
There's only one operational management plan, so either way is fine with staff.
Okay, and my second question is on the table at the beginning of the staff report. It says that there is a maximum percent double occupancy. Where does this 10% number come from?
The 10% number is a requirement of...
The 10% number is a requirement of our city council SRO policy.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, most of my questions have already been asked, so I will keep this mercifully short. But on that last point, and I think it was appropriately raised by Vice Chair Zick about sort of some confusion about whether this is a single occupant. I read that council policy, and it does say maximum percent double occupancy, 10%. So implicitly, the remaining 90% at the least would be single. But in abundance of caution, we should just be very clear about what that is in our conditions of approval. I do have a few questions on the, the property management plan, and I share some concerns about who is the lead service provider, what's the role of some of the community partners that are listed in the, the applicant's plan here. But I do have a question. So in section 5.5, it's page 13 of the PMP, there's a reference to a regulatory agreement with the city of Costa Mesa. Mr. Drapkin, this is just an affordable housing agreement like we've executed with other property owners who have deed restricted affordable housing?
Correct.
Okay. And then I think my last question, in the following page, 14, there's a discussion about behavioral policies and specifically related to drug-related criminal activity. There's mention of prohibition on cannabis marijuana use. My question, though, is there's also a reference to saying that landlords of federally assisted housing can terminate tenancy of anybody who's using an illegally controlled substance. So do we know if this project does have any federal assistance tied to it?
I'm not aware of the funding that they're proposing to use.
Okay.
It's, it's not, it's no funding, it's coming from the city, though.
Okay.
At this point, at least.
We'll leave these questions for the applicant, I guess. Okay. If there's no more questions from the dais, I'd like to open the public hearing and invite the applicant or the applicant's representative to come forward if you'd like to make a presentation. Do we have the applicant's representative here?
Actually, the applicant is, had to go to Washington, I was told this morning, and was going to be speaking over Zoom, so he might be on Zoom right now. The individual at the, at the podium right now is the applicant's architect.
Okay, that's Mr. Schaefer, correct?
Yeah, I think they can team.
Okay. So Anna, do we have anybody on, the applicant on Zoom?
Hi there.
Hello. All right. Hello. Welcome. Let me ask you first your name for the record.
Sure. My name is Dr. Nekon Kadib, and hopefully you can see my video as well. I don't know if you guys can see me.
We cannot. We're, we're getting there. We can at least see your name on our, our screen at the moment. First question, though, have you read the staff report and do you, and the conditions of approval, and do you agree to them?
Yes, sir, I have.
Okay.
I do agree with them. Thank you so very much.
Sure. Okay, the floor is yours, so if you'd like to make a presentation or respond to some of the questions from the commissioners, go right ahead.
Thank you so very much. And again, you're more than welcome to open my video if that makes it easier for you guys. In the meantime, I simply would like to express my sincere appreciation to each and every one of you, join as a...
All right, did we lose Mr. Kadib?
Staff sent me a button. Okay. Well, good morning again, or good evening, I should say.
All right.
Thank you so very much for having me. I just want to first start by expressing my sincere appreciation to each and every one of you. I think the work that you guys are doing with regards to affordable housing specifically is really instrumental and very helpful for our community. So thank you so very much for taking the time to review this application. The same goes for the staff, especially Mr. Jaeger, he's missed, but he's here in spirit, and he sent his best person he can imagine. So thank you so very much to the entire team and staff. To answer your questions, simply I would say is that we're just so grateful for the opportunity to provide affordable housing to a much-needed community who really live and work in the community and, and really are instrumental to the fabric of our, our society and our community. And so if we can play a role in helping out, we feel incredibly grateful for that opportunity. That being said, I know, I noticed a couple of questions that I had wrote down that you guys had, and if it's okay, I'll answer them. The first one with regards to public agencies, you had mentioned Costa Mesa as part of one of the agencies. I had mentioned Costa Mesa is because Mr. Robbins, Nate Robbins, has been such an instrumental partner and source of guidance as I've gone through this process with you guys. He's made it very clear that once everything gets hopefully approved and moved forward, Mr. Robbins would be a good source as well to help potentially funnel those, those individuals in Costa Mesa that are in need of affordable housing towards this site. And so that's why, that was also another reason I had listed Costa Mesa as a steward or a partner, along with the various other nonprofits and agencies, including, just to name a few, the United Way, PATH, the Illumination Foundation, and obviously the Orange County Housing Authority. These are really some of the, the best nonprofit and agencies that can really identify those individuals that are just so vulnerable and in need of housing. So hopefully that answers your question about the public agencies. In terms of support services, there will not be onsite support services. The support services that are mentioned or alluded to in some of the documentations that you see refer to, a lot of individuals have what's called case managers or social workers that work with them. They might drop by and check on them, or they might be a resource or, or a source of communication between oftentimes property management and, and the tenant itself. And so we, we understand that, and I acknowledge that, and I just want to make sure that the city is aware as well that we're open to these types of accommodations where we want to make sure that our tenants are thriving and growing and becoming, you know, good partners in the community. And so if they do have a case manager or social worker, oftentimes they do various programs, including the Cal AIM, CalOptima program, or through various of these, some of these nonprofits also have, actually, most of these nonprofits have their own case managements coordinated between these tenants. We want to make sure we, we are stewards and respectful of those wishes and work with them as well. So hopefully that answers the question with regards to social services onsite. There was a question about smoking. I'll let Mr. Schaefer, the architect, potentially answer that question with regards to smoking. We obviously want to make sure we're a smoke-free campus and sites, encourage obviously healthy behaviors, but we also want to be respectful of people's wishes, and so I'm sure we can figure out a solution to that, to that question that was raised earlier. Again, that being said, thank you so very much for this opportunity, and I'll defer back to, to you, the planning commission, as well as staff, if you guys have any further questions. And again, Mr. Schaefer's here as well, who's the, the lead architect and the representative for the project, and he can answer questions if you guys have it.
Okay. Thank you very, thank you very much, Dr.
My not being there, I'm very old school, I'd love to be there in person. This was a, a very rare circumstance that I have to be here in DC advocating, and so, but I really, I'm so sorry that I'm not there in person.
We appreciate you joining us by Zoom, thank you for that effort. Commissioners, any questions of Dr. Kadib? Vice Chair Zick?
Thank you. Doctor, thank you for taking time to call both your video and audio were crystal clear, and so I appreciate being able to ask you questions and understand your responses. My questions primarily draw from the PMP. So I'm referring to page one of the PMP, where you indicate that your rental term is on an annual basis. Are you intending to be signing one-year leases with tenants?
Yes, sir.
And do those leases provide them for any early cancellation rights, or are they obligated for one year of rent payments?
There are early termination opportunities that are, that will be written into language, and that is just to better accommodate some of these, just better accommodate these, these tenants. But the intentions are obviously is to have long-term housing for these individuals.
So do these...
However, some of these nonprofits have explained to me that, you know, if there's an, if there, if we can put into a clause where there's an early termination for some unforeseen circumstance, that would be great, but obviously the intentions are 100% long-term leases for these individuals.
Okay, so do these leases then also carry options to renew at the...
Yes, they do. Absolutely.
Okay. All right, so the units are fully furnished. The single occupancy units have what size of a bed? Would you know that detail yet?
I don't. I can get that information for you, be it necessary. I want you to know that both, a lot of these nonprofit organizations provide professional furnishings for these, these tenant, these tenants and these individuals, and they've expressed that very clearly to us. They come, make the appropriate measurements specifically to cater towards some of the needs for those particular tenants. And so that, that is, that is on that topic.
Okay. I should have asked you this at the outset. Are you the owner of Aura Investments? Are you a partner or employee? Tell me your association with Aura Investments.
Yes, sir, I'm the owner.
Okay. And how long have you owned this property?
I have owned it for about two years now, two and a half, two years or two and a half years, sir.
Okay. So I'm still on page one. At the bottom, you talk about the HVAC equipment and that based on the age of the equipment, there's no need to replace it. I'm assuming that if a tenant had a problem with their equipment, you wouldn't hesitate to repair or replace it, correct?
Correct. That's part of our responsibilities. There's going to be repair, replacements, corrections of any onsite, any problems. We understand the needs of this community. This is a social philanthropic arm for us, specifically for me, and so we won't hesitate to take care of those things.
All right. On page three, you indicate that there, that the day-to-day activities will be carried out under the direct supervision of the property manager. I'm assuming the property manager is the person who lives onsite, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
It, it further indicates the property manager will report to the property supervisor. Where is that person located?
Offsite, sir.
Offsite, where?
We have offices, various locations, so Riverside, Corona, San Diego, we have an office in Laguna, so various, various areas.
Okay. Further down on that page, where you're talking about unit inspections, you indicate that your management staff must receive verbal or written permission to enter a unit if the resident is not able to be there. I was kind of curious about the verbal permission. What, what would you say is going to be your evidence of having verbal permission to enter a unit? Why would you not simply require written permission?
Verbal permission simply could be that there, oh, let me, um... If there's an emergency, for example, if they, you know, maybe left something on and they want us to go in there, I can only foresee possible in those emergency situations, but for the most part, it would, would be written, but we left the verbal component to it just in case if there was an emergency of some sort that we needed to address for the tenant, that we could have that ability, just for the safety of the patient.
All right.
For the individual.
Tenant. Page, page nine, you talk about the service of water and electricity, and you indicate that both for water and electricity, for the common areas, it's paid for by the owner. That implies to me that you're going to be separately metering water and electricity to each unit? Is that understanding of mine correct?
No, sir. We've moved forward on that, and we realize it's way more beneficial for these tenants if we just cover all those services. Given their, their income levels, it would behoove us as good stewards to be able to provide those services. So we will be taking care of all water, electricity, trash, internet for the tenants onsite.
Okay. I'll make a mental note, but maybe Mr. Drapkin, you can make a written note that the PMP on page nine needs to be updated to reflect that. And then you probably, or may have heard my question about single occupancy, and I want to make sure that your operational plan reflects the city's understanding, and that is that a single occupancy unit will be occupied by a single person. Not a married couple, not a boyfriend-girlfriend, but a single individual. Is that correct? That's your plan?
That is, that is correct. That is my understanding, and that is our plan.
Okay. So I'm puzzled a little bit on the bottom of page nine, where you say the project has adopted standards for the number of persons initially permitted to occupy the units. I do not understand why you would make that statement. Single occupancy unit, one person, I don't understand the complexity beyond that.
The only complexity that was, and that's a great question, it was only raised to us halfway through the process that a lot of these individuals have caregivers that might come and check on them or stay with them for a couple hours throughout the day, and so they wanted us to be able to have some type of language to better accommodate those types of needs. But to make it very crystal clear, single-room occupancy means one person occupying and living at that site.
In the case of a caregiver or even a visitor, that wouldn't be somebody spending the night in either case, correct?
Correct.
All right. And then on the top of page 10 of the PMP, there's a paragraph that I find very confusing to me. It says, well, I feel like the paragraph is unnecessary, and I'll tell you what the paragraph is and why I feel that way. If and when the household is overhoused, meaning underoccupied, that is too few people for the unit, the household will be required to move to the next available appropriate-size unit. If the household is underhoused, overcrowded, that is, the household will be required to move up to the next available approved-sized unit. So here's why that makes no sense to me. You only have four double occupancy units, and as I think we've discussed now, double occupancy means two people.
Correct.
So the only relevance I can see to this paragraph would be is if you have a double occupancy unit and only one person's living there, that at the first available opportunity, you'd move them out of that unit to a single unit, so you could rent out the double occupancy unit. Under no circumstance do I see a situation where you would have two occupants in a single occupancy unit, and then they'd have to be moved up, because you don't allow more than one person in a single occupancy unit. So am I describing the situation accurately?
Correct. However, there are, can be occasions where a single-room occupancy individual might get married, get into a relationship, and if they do wish, and there was an availability for a doc, double occupancy, we would at that point, to comply with the requirements, have to move them to a double occupancy. But I would be happy to make any changes you feel necessary. I don't mind whatsoever, because I can see, I understand, I can see the confusion there.
Okay. All right. Top of page 14, and the chair touched on this topic just a little bit, where you talk about a prohibition that residents not be involved in drug-related criminal activity, including the use or possession of marijuana. Now, we already know they can't smoke in their rooms, so what is your intention with regard to this prohibition? If you saw somebody come back to the property from having visited one of many retail cannabis businesses around your project, would that mean they would have some problem to explain?
I would, I'm going to ask staff to potentially help me with this. I would simply raise the concern, Commissioner, that sometimes, and it doesn't occur all the time, but sometimes heavy use of cannabis... Heavy use of cannabis can create such a horrible stench that can really. Irritate a lot of the surrounding tenants as well, individuals that are around them. And being that it's, you know, a a facility where. People can interact quite frequently, we just wanna make sure everybody's safe. And under no harm with regards to potential allergies or irritations or injuries. So again, we wanna comply with all state laws and city requirements and county requirements, but. We also wanna be stewards and respectful of the safety of everybody onsite. And so if there are individuals who, you know, are like you had mentioned, going to multiple shops and that's their prerogative, but if they come back. Just real with a horrible stench that's, you know, are raising concerns by the tenants. I think at that point, there's a there's a conversation that needs to be warranted.
All right, on the page eighteen, where you're talking about the uh desire. To accommodate the people who live and work in Costa Mesa. So you say specifically in under section seven, the preference will be set aside for individuals and housing. Households, excuse me, living and or working in the city of Costa Mesa. My question to you is, how is it that you plan to do that and at the same time? Meet any uh fair housing uh requirements? So in other words, somebody from Anaheim comes to you and they're ready to sign a lease. Uh, do you say no cuz uh wanna wait for somebody from Costa Mesa?
So I would say to answer your question, it was it was a recommendation by um. People in the city who had mentioned, uh, in the city had mentioned that uh we would appreciate it if we could give a little bit more preference. To people who are working in the community. And so when we work with the nonprofits, many of the nonprofits identify individuals who prefer Costa Mesa, for example, because they might. Work at a local restaurant, work at a little lo- local shop. And so obviously, we're gonna do our best to um, you know, prioritize individuals who work and live, work and wanna live closer to their workplace. That being said, we also wanna, you know, make sure we meet all fair housing practices, so it's a little bit of both, Commissioner. Uh, we do wanna obviously help uh the residents who work in this community, but we also wanna be stewards of the laws, so. I think it's gonna be a little bit of, um, you know, a little bit of push and pull with the nonprofits to be able to find the right people for the for the property.
Okay, and then thank you for that, and then on page nineteen, and I think you may have heard the question before about this. Uh, onsite case management and the indication is that there is no onsite uh case management. So I'm a little bit wondering why there's any discussion of case management in this PMP. When it is not part of. The operation of the project as far as we're concerned.
Correct, as we were starting the process with you guys, it was it was it was brought up a number of times by city that's. It was important to make sure that we understood that individuals who have very low incomes oftentimes battle with various social determinants. Which would afford them some degree of case management or social support system. And they wanted to know, one, if we would be supportive of that. And understanding and willing to work and recognize those individuals, and we made it very clear that we would. Um, we know, like I said before, many do work with various CalAim programs where they have caseworkers or social workers. But yes, you're right, none of them will be onsite full time. They do probably, they do come and go to visit their tenants on a scheduled as needed basis. And uh, our decision to write it as part of the operational plan was to make it very clear to the city that we understand that, recognize it. And wanna be supportive of the tenant's needs.
Okay, and then on page twenty, you talk about your housing first philosophy. And you indicate that there is um no barrier, no precondition regarding um sobriety time. Uh, participation in treatment, et cetera. Now, if you were just running a regular apartment complex, um, I I would say that would be the the same. You wouldn't be discriminating against somebody who signed up to rent an apartment and ask them if they've uh been sober. But the fact that that's in your policy here makes me wonder what kinds of uh population you're intending to serve. Not what kind of population might walk through the door, but what is your intention for the population you're serving? You talk about case management, you talk about no barrier related to sobriety, I I wanna understand that better.
These are great questions, a lot of this comes from direction from city, to be honest with you, Commissioner. Uh, making it very clear that we would not discriminate because a lot of times people with a very low income. Uh, battle again with various social determinate, they might have had a DUI uh in the past, they might have dealt with again some type of uh. Uh, again, I'll just, the only thing that comes to my mind is a DUI in the past. And so, or they might have like a bankruptcy, and so they wanna make sure that we wouldn't discriminate based on those backgrounds. And so, um, a lot of times they had mentioned that many uh these types of individuals uh are discriminated. And so they felt like some type of acknowledgement would be beneficial uh in this process. Um, I understand where you're coming from, I can hear your concern. Are you, are you try, are, am I trying to bring potentially the wrong type of. Mischievous types of individuals to the community, that's not my intentions. My intentions is to uh bring people who wanna work. And be supportive, uh, active of of growing members of the community, people who love Costa Mesa. People who wanna be responsible, safe citizens and just needed a second chance in life because they lost their job. Housing costs have gone through the roof, they've gone through a divorce, they're a disabled veteran now on a fixed income. These are the types of people we're thinking about.
All right, I have, I had only one last question except this last couple of responses. Um, now I have two questions, and the question I have for you is this. Since you have indicated that a a number of these issues in the PMP. Are in response to input, feedback, communication uh that you've had with the city. Um, my very simple question is, who's in charge of running this project, you or the city?
I'm in charge of running this project.
Okay.
However, I do recognize and respect uh your your role in this partnership of moving this project forward.
Okay, and then my last question, and I think it's a simple one, where is the smoking area, the designated smoking area on the site? And I'm looking at one of the site plans.
I'll ask the architect on this one and then I'll also ask him, do we need to have one, but I'm sure he'll be able to answer this.
Okay, thank, thank you for your patience in responding to all my questions. So if maybe on the presentation screen, we could see the site plan and then possibly staff run the mouse over the area. Yeah, right, right there, huh?
Yeah. There's a, I don't know if you can see it, a gate um there, but that would be secured that area and then uh it's outside. And separate from our outdoor area, recreation area and the front of the buildings.
Okay, and when you say you could accommodate a smoking area there, I wanna be, have a little crisper response on that. Because you specifically, and in our conditions of approval, are specific that there is no smoking on site. With the exception of the designated smoking area.
Correct. Yes.
So there is a designated smoking area, not there could be.
The plans do not currently show it or identify it uh in drawing. What I'm saying is it shall be placed at that location, if the condition so uh is such.
The condition is such that there shall be one.
There.
And it's, well, and it shall be, as you know from looking at the conditions, should be twenty five feet away from any entrance. Um, let me look at that condition so we're, you and I are clear. Okay, the condition doesn't state that, it's in the staff report. Somebody faster than me and have the page number?
Where is council policy?
Is it in the PMP?
Page fourteen of the PMP. Thank you, at least twenty, that writes middle paragraph, at least twenty five feet away from the entrance to buildings, doorways. And operable windows, so does that location comply with that requirement?
I believe it does, the entrance of that unit at the end is about a dozen feet from that and then there aren't any openings on that side.
Okay, as long as that location is compliant, and I guess staff will be checking that.
Yeah, staff would be checking that, um, we would review for that. At that location, I would be a little bit concerned because adjacent to that property are residential apartments. In the Mobile Home Park, I believe to the um, where it would be south if this was north, south oriented. But to the east, to the west is apartments and to the south is the mobile home parks. So um, that might not be the most ideal place to locate a smoking area, in my opinion, but. Um, again, staff would could, would and could and will work with the applicant to make sure that the smoking. Area complies with their PMP and then does not impact any of the adjacent residents or um uses.
So as long as we get the condition approval number twenty eight to add the additional uh language about that requirement. That will be our belt suspenders to make sure it actually occurs.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, I don't have any more questions.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Chair, uh, I just have one last question for the applicant, um, Dr. Kati B, if you're still there. Um. In reference to this term lead service provider. Um, I'm still unclear as to what this is, and I'll just read for the the record, it says. Lead supportive service provider in the building will be the in-house supportive service provider primarily dedicated to low income populations. Including homeless and at-risk individuals and families, so given that there's no social services provided onsite, what what is this role?
This individual will also play a role in in coordination between uh those tenants that have a case management. And uh our our offices. In part because as the property manager onsite is also gonna be very busy with repairs, maintenance of the property. We felt like sometimes having a coordination between the case manager and the tenant. Uh, would be a little over over too much for one person to handle on top of their responsibilities and so. This is simply another individual uh that will uh be available to help just coordinate. Uh, for example, if the patient or if the individual must have transportation come and pick them up, just to make sure. We know who the transportation services are to come pick them up, to take into, for example, their doctor's appointment. Or if the case manager is saying, hey, I need to come onsite to visit this particular tenant. This person could just make sure they put it in the log book because we're gonna be very uh diligent with who comes onsite and who comes offsite. Uh, we don't want to, obviously, we wanna make sure everybody feels safe and and secure where they're living there and so. Uh, that's the role this person uh will play. Uh, just to reiterate one more time, we do not provide any services outside the traditional scope of our property management. We're not a medical provider, we're not a social services provider, we don't do any of that stuff. That's where those nonprofits come and play their roles, but nothing's done onsite, to answer your question.
Okay.
Just wanna recognize and acknowledge that we wanna be partners, we understand the complexities, sometimes some of these tenants might have. Not all of them will have these, but if they do, we wanna make sure we're supportive.
Okay, thank you for that, uh.
If there's no more questions.
Up, Commissioner Dixon.
So thank you again for uh appearing on Zoom, we know that uh probably laid out there. I, you know, throughout the PMP, which is very well put together, but there, um, you know, the lead services providers and support services. Are an integral part of resident retention, resident identification, resident uh compliance, um. Like the entire process for um the housing retention action plan, they're a critical component. So I think the reason that there are so many questions about that is we would like to know who that is. Um, some of us have had experience with providers uh in other matters, uh, in my professional life. Uh, there are good providers and there's bad providers. Um, we've had cases where some of the hired providers um do the absolute bare minimum. And the uh, the 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 folks who are in need of support don't have the the ability or sophistication or. Or ca- capa- capacity to uh appeal to higher authority or to follow up with someone, uh. Uh, so we really do, we're trying to better understand how such a critical element of the PMP. Just remains unidentified and I and you explained that they were the existing case managers and social workers, cuz a lot of this population will have. Somebody along those lines, but let's say it's someone who doesn't have an existing uh case manager or social worker or something. Then it seems like there, they would be in sort of a precarious position if they don't have the sophistication necessary to navigate all of the rules. Um, so that's a, that's a big concern and I I kinda like to better, and you said it's not onsite. Um, which is another concern because then um I would, I would assume that whatever external. Um, case manager or social worker would be able to visit them at their, at their particular residence uh onsite. But um, if you could just, I know you've explained it to some degree, but but with such. Critical components of the PMP depended upon their involvement, um, we'd like to flesh that out a little more, have you. Uh, you also mentioned Mercy House, United Way, others like that, um. Have you had discussions with them and have, do you have agreements with them or memoranz of understanding? Or anything along those lines um regarding how this will uh function moving forward?
Yes, sir, and that's an incredible uh question because not a lot of people understand the importance of. Uh, supportive as a component to uh uh having tenants thrive and uh. Survive and do well long term when they're in that particular socioeconomic status. Uh, part of the reason we were able to not provide those services onsite was because of the. Why repeat something that's already been done so well? Organizations like you had mentioned, Mercy House, Illumination Foundation, the United Way, uh Path. They have invested and they have millions of dollars of government, federal, state, county grants. Uh, that pro- that are used towards these types of supportive services. And so for us as a as as an organization to go do this, it would. I always say sometimes you gotta stay in your lane and find the best people for those opportunities and so. Uh, work, just having active discussions for years with these organizations, even up until this past week. Uh, I'm on the page, they're on the page that we provide the housing, they will provide the social support services to ensure. Those tenants that require those services will be able to thrive and do well long term. To answer your questions about maybe there's individuals who fall through the cracks and don't get those services, well, the good thing is. As the owner, uh, I also appreciate that, that sometimes people can fall through the cracks, but the good thing is I have those relationships with. The United Way, Mercy House, these organizations, so if it's needed, we can always introduce them to those services if they need that.
Great, thank you.
I hope that answered your question, okay.
It does, and and that can be something that's addressed at the initial, um, you know, tenancy or something along those lines if they don't have an existing one, um. The other question is regarding the reasonable accommodation, even though it's only four units, the ten percent that are double occupancy and and this seems to be written. Very clearly that no more than those ten percent will ever be double occupancy, reasonable accommodation or not. Um, that's the way it reads to me, so if that's not your understanding, let me know. Um, so reading through that process in the PMP, the only appeal sort of mechanism would be within the company, within your company. Um, and possibly with a representant, a representant, uh, their representation from social worker or uh case managers, is that? Is I'm reading that correctly?
To, to, to be able to increase the percentage of double occupancy?
If someone makes a reasonable. If someone makes a reasonable accommodation request and your property manager denies it, what is their sort of appeal mechanism, if any?
Correct. It would be through their case manager, if they have it. If not, it would be up to, go up to me, in essence, to our company, go to the supervisor level and so forth.
Okay.
To answer the, and to address the 10% thing, that is something that is coming from you guys, not from us. And we want to make sure we respect those wishes of the city.
Absolutely. Okay. And then regarding the cannabis issue, and I appreciate your concern for other tenants with the odor and things like that. I've been into a store that was adjacent, it was actually a bakery adjacent to a cannabis dispensary, and the only thing you could smell was just cannabis, not any butter or cream or sugar, any of that good stuff. So do you receive any federal housing assistance? Is this something that is a requirement under whatever financing you have? Or is this something where there's some, obviously, I can understand the smoking part of it, but I wouldn't necessarily want someone to get, you know, tossed out on their ear if they're, you know, have a gummy or something like that that's perfectly legal otherwise.
Correct. No, sir. I get no federal, state, county, city funding whatsoever. This is 100% out of my own pocket. And again, we're not in the business of putting people on the streets. We want to help people. This is, this is a philanthropic arm for me. We want to help people, get people thriving. We will work with them as long as it doesn't cause complaints for the other people or safety issues for the other tenants that are on the property.
Great. Thank you very much. And then the criteria, you mentioned a few, like veterans, elderly, disabled, folks like that. I guess it would be any other category, like there were suggestions for single parents, but that would be a double occupancy, it would only apply to four units. So, okay, that answers that question, actually, with something. And I believe that's all that I have at the moment. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Commissioner Martinez, one last question of the applicant?
Two questions.
Okay.
So you mentioned in your PMP, wanting to serve seniors, veterans, the disabled. So first, I wanted to ask if all of the bottom-floor units are ADA compliant, and if there's any one or so of, more maybe, of the units that'll have more accessibility features in them?
Yes, not all, but there are a number of them that are ADA compliant, where if they are in a wheelchair, or they are in a wheelchair full-time, they can wheel themselves directly into the walk-in shower.
Fantastic. And then the second question is on the vehicle gate to enter the property. It was mentioned somewhere in the staff report that it's a manual vehicle gate and not electric or automatic. And I wanted to ask if it's possible to make it electric, automatic, for people who are disabled to be able to easily enter and exit?
Sure, that's definitely something we're, we're working on, along with other energy sustainable options as well, including solar panels. But I think that's a great idea, and I'd be happy to definitely work with my team to pursue that option.
All right. And I have a question for staff after. Thanks.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Dr. Katiabi. I'll give you an opportunity for closing comments after we have a public comment. So I'll open public comment now. If you'd like to speak on this item, please approach the podium. If you're on Zoom, use the raise hand option. And if you're joining us by phone and you'd like to speak, please press star nine. Is there anybody in chambers who would like to speak? We have one. All right. Good evening.
Hello. Good evening, Paul. My name is Ashley Anderson. I'm here as a, my name is Ashley Anderson. I am here as a renter in West Coast Mesa, District 5, coming from the previous place that I lived in, which had 20 single units. And where I live right now, there's 12. And there's not as much enforcement with the single occupancy, even though that I think is the objective. We have families living in some of our units currently. There's not a lot of places to move that are affordable. So I just, while I know that the current city council policy is for one person, literally one of my units has a mom and dad and two children under the age of five living there. They, one lives in the bedroom, in the bedroom. There's just, space is really limited. And I think it might be time for the city to reevaluate plans that were put in place, you know, 30 years ago, and have been updated, but not necessarily qualified currently. I wanted to thank Nate Robbins and other staff for coming forward with this. As many of you know, I was leading the eviction diversion collaborative for United Way. And so we saw a lot of findings and recommendations that came forward, particularly about single moms. We have a lot of moms who are living in their car with their child. And so that is a big concern. There are a lot of good questions raised by the commissioners around community partners. I did want to say something. I think the actual reality, particularly for Cal Amon case managers that are not onsite, it takes quite a long time for the process if someone loses their job or needs to apply for rental assistance. A five-day pay-or-quit is the amount for someone who has not been struggling with housing. So I think there needs to be a lot more flexibility in the variables that were written in for a pay-or-quit within five days, for a rental increase that said 30 or 60 days. 60 days would be needed. And so I just, there's a lot of variables that would be more beneficial to this population that is greatly at risk of going back into homelessness, or particularly jumping from job to job or having some instability in their jobs. I have a lot more, but I will send you an email, because I think there's a lot more to qualify. There's so many people that need housing that make under $59,000 in our city. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Seeing no one else in chambers. Anna, do we have anybody on Zoom or by phone?
Cynthia McDonald, you may provide your public comment.
Evening, Commissioners. Thank you to the Commissioners for digging in on this. I had many of the same questions. The PMP appears to me, as somebody who's done property management, to be a document that was kind of Frankenstein together. And that suggests that this is a first-time experience for the owners. And there's a first-time experience for everyone. So I don't want to be negative about the project, because, as you know, I have been an advocate for affordable housing in the city for many years now. However, I did go and I checked the address for the property management company, and it's a post office. And I wonder how many other properties does this company manage and operate? Could maybe the applicant speak about his experience on that? And it seems like the clientele is coming from referrals from nonprofits. I wonder how that works. I did see the doctor's website. He is involved in the treatment of substance abuse clients. Are his tenants going to come from his practice? And again, don't take this negatively, but we have had a difficult time with our sober living homes in Costa Mesa, so I'm just looking to protect us there. Finally, the bus bench near this project. You know, it's great to have a project where we don't have the minimum parking standards. It's got bike facilities. That's wonderful. But the bus bench nearby is an old bus bench. It's not covered. It needs to be replaced with something more modern and with a cover. So that one is for staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else, Anna?
Richard Huff, Richard Huffman, you may provide your public comment.
Okay. Mr. Huffman, you have the floor.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm kind of approaching this from the standpoint of just, you know, not a planning commissioner's point of view, just a resident, and wondering about the conversion of an old aging motel to, to long-term tenants, that's single occupancy. You know, all you need to do is add a kitchen to a motel room, and now you have a single resident occupancy. So what are the government agencies doing with this project that are referred to? Sounds like the information I've gathered so far is that they're referring tenants to the, to, to the project. And it's basically a private, for-profit enterprise, real estate company. I know the good doctor is involved in providing all of these at an affordable rate, which is really what we need. And that's a great, it's a great idea. And so are, are the tenants all referred by the nonprofits? Or can any person apply under the financial requirements? So if somebody is in the market for an affordable unit, can they apply without being referred? I don't know much about the business plan of this company, other than that it is an affordable housing project, which looks like it probably is available to the general public. And so just a few concerns about that. And otherwise, I'm in support of, of these units, these affordable units. What a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else, Anna?
No, there is not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioners, any further questions of the applicant? All right. Oh, Commissioner Dixon, go ahead.
Very quickly, just following up on that last public comment, Mr. Huffman, are these going to be all referrals from your partners and the folks that were referenced in the PMP? Or will they be walk-ins or the general public can call and put in an application?
You want to be stewards of the law, Commissioner. However, I would, I would really strive at the beginning to push for mostly coming from the nonprofits or the actual Orange County Housing Authority. These are, these are organizations that have been vetted, that are respected, that are known to the community, and they can do a lot of the due diligence behind the scenes identifying these particular tenants. That being said, we won't discriminate. However, we would encourage the nonprofits and the Orange County Housing Authority would probably be the primary source. But again, we will not discriminate. And to answer any other of the question about, I think somebody had mentioned, will they be my patients? No. I just, I happen to be a doctor, but no, none of my patients will be, will be coming to this, to this property. This is, this is, and I know it sounds like a business, this is actually a philanthropic arm for me. This is something I want to do to give back. I've already done the numbers. If I'm lucky, I'll break, break even. So don't think of it as, as a, oh, this guy is making tons of money. I'm not. I'll be breaking even on this project. This is a social arm for me. I really want to give back to a community that's allowed me to do well myself. And I just really appreciate those questions.
All right. Thank you. I will now close the public hearing. May I have a motion? Let's see, Commissioner Martinez?
I move that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution to find that the project is categorically exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act per SEQUIT Guideline, Section 15301, existing facilities, and approve conditional use permit PCUP 230003 based on findings of fact and subject to conditions of approval. I will additionally add a condition of approval to subject the application to double occupancy required as specified in council policy, and further direct staff to look into the notice, notice-to-quit issue that was brought up by a public commenter, and work with the applicant on that.
Okay. I'll second that motion. Do you want to speak to your motion?
Yes. So obviously, as ever, we are in a housing crisis. And this application is another step forward for getting more housing in the city of Costa Mesa. So I'll obviously be supportive of that. This application is also fully very low-income housing for potentially Costa Mesa residents, people who live and work here, for people who are veterans, seniors, disabled. I think that this, this is a great project. It'll help all of the people who are, who will be able to live here. And I'm excited for more housing along Harbor Boulevard and hope that we can get more of that soon with upcoming rezoning. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak on the motion? Commissioner Zick, Vice Chair Zick, excuse me.
First of all, just a question to see if the maker of the motion wanted to adjust the language of condition of approval number 21 to say property management plan, just to be a little more precise about the operating document. Yeah. And then, if the second agrees.
I agree as well.
Okay. Thank you. And then the condition of approval number 28 that referred to smoking, were you interested in supporting the rewording of that to be clear that there is no smoking allowed in the rooms and that the designated smoking area will comply with the 25-foot separation?
Is that already in the PMP?
In the PMP it is.
But not in the conditions.
All right. We can, I will support adding it to the conditions of approval if the second agrees.
Yes, I agree.
Okay. And then, so let me speak to the motion then. You know, when I first, when I first read this application, I was very positively inclined to, to support it. It's, it's clear that there is a population in our community that could benefit from affordable housing like this. And if you read the council policy, they make it pretty clear that the purpose of the policy, supporting SROs, is to provide a means for establishing housing available to citizens of Costa Mesa within the low and very low-income segments. Recognizing that there's a portion of the labor force, I emphasize that, it means, that implies, people working, people with jobs, that there is a portion of the labor force within the business community that these lower, that need these lower income, have lower income levels. It goes on to say, "As it did in 1991, traditional housing in Costa Mesa is simply not affordable to this segment." Just as an aside, maybe the people that complain about a housing crisis would say, yeah, John, and it also existed back in 1991. And if you said that, I'd say, okay. But for anybody that thinks the housing crisis is new and that's why we need this, I would, I guess I'd have a slightly different view of that. The problem I have with this is when I read the purpose of the council policy for SROs, and then I look at the intended use of this project, to me, it's completely different. To me, I don't see this as an affordable housing option for the labor workforce in the community. To me, this feels a lot like the permanent supportive housing motel conversions. And that isn't what this is. This is an SRO. Yet the PMP is written as if it's a permanent supportive housing project, referencing all kinds of case management and supportive services. Well, that's not what the SRO talks about in terms of its purpose. I had the same feeling as I read through the PMP and asked questions about it that one of the public commenters had. I didn't use the term Frankenstein. I used the term in my notes, rough draft. This feels like a rough draft. It feels like there is language in here that needs to be edited and changed, sections in here that need to be eliminated because they're not applicable to this project in terms of it being an SRO. Had this come to us in a study session, I'll circle back. Had this come to us in a study session, I'll circle back to make that point, I, I think we would have had much of the same discussion, but then I think we would go away from this and these documents would be retooled. We'd see a plan, for example, that showed where that smoking area was. We'd have a better description of what the tenant occupancy is going to be, not minimum occupancy for a single occupant unit. It's one. I don't know. I have, I have difficulty supporting this application. It feels like a lot of it is a rough draft, not a final product, and it feels like the purpose of this project is different than the purpose that the council articulates in council policy. I, I admire what the applicant is wanting to do, and is likely, if I know how math works around here, is going to get to do. But I just don't, I don't see that having this kind of facility in that location is, is supported by, by me and by the staff report. So I won't be supporting the motion.
Any other comments, commissioners? Okay. I, as always, appreciate the vice chair's perspective on this, and he and I often disagree, but I think, in this case, I, I do disagree. I am obviously supporting the motion, and the primary reason is that no one characterizes their, where they live as a single-room occupancy, or a multifamily apartment, or an efficiency unit, or a permanent supportive housing. They simply live in a home, and we desperately need more homes in the city. I think it is consistent with the council's SRO policy, and I think it's the right location for this. When we often talk about housing, we refer to the developer, and I haven't even heard that name mentioned tonight. We have an applicant who's come forward, and by his own account is, is financing this project. That's a huge anomaly. We don't get projects like this. Obviously, there's a reason for him to take financial risks, although he said this is, you know, altruistic and philanthropic, and I, I appreciate that, and I take him at his word. But at the end of the day, we have an applicant who's going to provide a much-needed service for our community, and I will be supporting this motion. Commissioner Dixon?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have some of the same concerns as Vice Chair Zick. However, I am actually encouraged by the fact that it's the applicant's own money, and there's not a ton of permanent supportive housing type strings attached, that the, the, the measures that the applicant has put into place regarding support are off-site and not tied to the project, except for, through the PMP and the condition of approval saying it'll comply with the PMP. I do have concerns about the PMP. It's, it's, I would, I would encourage, conditional approval number 21 says that you shall operate in compliance with the operational plan. We're going to change that to do the project management plan, or whatever its term is. Any alterations to the plan shall be reviewed and approved by the Director of Economic and Development Services prior to initiating any changes. I think there's been a lot of conversation here tonight, and I was hoping the applicant and staff were, were listening, and perhaps it can be streamlined and cleaned up to the satisfaction of the economic services, economic, I can't talk, I apologize. I'm looking for the exact title. Economic and Development Services Director, or their designee. That's something I'll leave up to staff. But I think there's a, there's a dramatic shortage of housing at this income level, and I think that we have several other of these SROs operating, in my understanding, fairly successfully in the city. I think that it's a completely privately funded, that while not necessary, all of these additional features and services help to guarantee the success, or at least help the success along, and I think protect the owner's investment, which I think is a big part of this, and also the neighbors in the areas around. I would just want to make sure on that smoking, that we do not shift that burden over to the folks on Parliament, or anywhere else, and that it, you know, that the city, whatever city standards are involved, or at least the 25 feet, that we make sure we're not creating a problem, because that was one of the big problems with the sober living homes when this all started, was, you know, 20 people smoking in the backyard. So I will be supporting this. I do have some, some hesitation about the PMP, and I do have some hesitation about, about how this, how this is presented. I would have liked to have seen this come to a study session, or at least a screening of some sort. And next time, if we have something with this many moving parts, it would be great if we could do that. But I am going to support this, and I wish you the best of luck.
Okay. Thank you. If there are no more comments, I'll call for the question.
Sorry, just one moment. That motion carries 5-1 with Commissioner Zick voting no, and Commissioner Andrade refused.
All right. That decision is final unless appealed to the city council within seven days. I can't quite close the meeting yet. Is Commissioner Andrade still in and around the area?
She left.
Okay. All right. We have no old business or new business, so that takes us to departmental reports. Mr. Yang, anything from Public Services?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Public Works has one short report, and that is the Adams Avenue, Pine Creek Avenue intersection project. It's been on the verge of completion, and this project essentially installed a new traffic signal. Also, green bike paths have been installed, and the strapping will be done by this Wednesday, and the crosswalks are operational. As the saying goes, a picture's worth a thousand words. I guess a little video is worth a million words. So I'll just show this aerial video. And that speaks for itself, so I defer back to the chair.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Yang. Mr. Drapkin, anything from Development Services?
Nothing tonight, Chair.
Okay. And then Mr. Prezioci, City Attorney, report?
Nothing, Chair.
Okay. Great. Well, I will adjourn the meeting then. Have a good night.